Excuse me a big enough check now. All right, I've got the bottom call, we'll call the meeting order today, Monday, October 2nd, 2023. Roll call, we have selectmen Howdy Goodwin, Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Jewett, myself, Jamie Thurlo, town manager Jesse Dunbar, and town clerk Sarah Abbott. And Kevin has said that he will not be here tonight.
I'll make a motion to excuse Kevin Buck from tonight's meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Kevin Buck from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, adoption of agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to change? Approval of minutes, we have the minutes from September 18th, 2023.
So, I make a motion to approve the minutes from September 18th, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from September 18th, 2023. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Holstein goes in here.
Okay, approval of warrants. We have warrant 26 for $11,608.71, 27 for $3,714.50, 28 for $10,512.15, 29 for $46,551.57.
I'm making a motion to approve warrants 26 through 29.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants 26 through 29. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, we have regular business. Southwest Harbor Tremont Ambulance Service would like to update us on some of their operations. Who would like to speak on behalf of you?
Andy Klein.
Yes.
For fitting me into your agenda, I'm here with my colleague Dave Ashworth.
Aye.
And so, I think you know that we were able to take delivery of our new ambulance back on May 31st and even happier about the fact that we were able to pay for it with the combination of the savings that we had accumulated and the fundraising that we did. Our happiness was short-lived when we found out that it didn't fit in our ambulance bay. For years, we'd been ordering ambulances that are five inches shorter than standard because we have a shorter clearance on our ambulance bay. And it got overlooked in the ordering process. We had another person in charge of it and it passed along. No excuses, we screwed up. And it's, you know, it would scrape the ceiling going in. So, we're, the result of that is that we have put the new ambulance at the Southwest Harbor Firehouse where our number two ambulance had been for a number of months, more than a year since the Tremont Fire Department needed the space where it had been for a while. So, we were accommodating our older ambulance there and anticipating the new one to be downtown, but we had to switch that. The downside, of course, is that downtown is where our primary on-duty provider is. And so, that made the older ambulance, which already has about 100,000 miles on it, the number one responder. And the newer ambulance was sitting idle some of the time, more than we wanted. We experimented with having the new ambulance parked outside the bay during the day so that it could be our first responder, sent the older one up to the firehouse. That worked a little bit, but when we ran into some weather extremes where the box was getting too hot, it would've been unsafe for a patient and a provider to be in there. And then, as nights started to get colder, we had to be concerned about heat in the day, cold at night for the medications that are onboard. So, that simply wasn't sustainable to bring it down and have it be the number one responder. So, we had to look at other options. We have looked into a variety of solutions to make the clearance at the ambulance bay downtown higher. We probably need to gain at least three inches in order to safely get that ambulance in and out. A couple of things we tried weren't gonna work for reasons I won't bore you with, and one that would work would be very expensive to the tune of $23,000, $24,000 for a different type of ambulance door. We haven't completely rejected that, but, you know, we, that's a lot of money for us. In conversations between Chief Chisholm of the Southwest Fire Department and our director, Andy Brayley, we learned that there might be room for us to have a space for our number one provider, our paramedic who's on duty, and both ambulances at the Southwest Harbor Fire Department. And we could use that as our primary base of operations instead of the downtown location. We decided to appoint a subcommittee to look into that and any other options we could come up with. And ultimately, we decided to request a six-month trial period of doing just exactly that. Fire Department's gonna give up one room so that we can have a desk, a computer, and so on, and a bed for our provider to be there, ready on-call, and room for both ambulances there. We would maintain use of the downtown office for administrative work and even possibly for a driver to sleep over. Something you may not be aware of is that we only have sleeping space for one person, so on an overnight situation, it has to be the EMT who is there sleeping. And therefore, we can only employ drivers who live close enough to respond quickly, right here in the immediate area. We've looked into other opportunities for drivers to find a place to stay who live further away. This retaining the office space downtown, at least for this six-month trial period, might enable us to do that and employ drivers that we couldn't otherwise use. So, last week, we went before the Southwest Select Board and they approved with some paperwork that needs to be done and insurance requirements have to be done to this six-month trial period of sharing of space there at Southwest Harbor Firehouse for our on-duty provider, as I said. We're here tonight to stress to you and all the residents of Tremont that this is just a shift in our launching point by a couple hundred yards. And that we are continuing to be fully committed to our mission to serve both towns. That's a high, high priority for us, and we think we can do and will do that operating from this location. We're being accommodated by the Southwest Firehouse. We are not being assimilated with the Southwest Harbor Fire Department. We don't, in the, one of the reasons for the six-month trial period rather than doing something more final is we don't wanna make any decisions in the short term that would close off options in the future. For example, if the Tremont Public Safety Building were to be built in the future and if there was an opportunity to have an ambulance and a provider there, we wanna be able to take advantage of that and serve the town of Tremont even better. So, I wanted to let you know about this development. Answer any questions? Hoping, oh, I forgot to mention, I did meet with Jesse several weeks ago, kind of ran by him the possibility that we could be shifting over to the firehouse. And when we were, I was, I told him I was genuinely concerned would residents of the town of Tremont feel like we were abandoning them. And we don't, we absolutely do not want that impression, and that is not our mission. Our mission is to serve both towns to the best of our ability. So, wanted to let you know about this update and answer questions best we can.
Thank you. You guys have any questions?
Oh, and I should say, I've also had conversations with Alan Fuhr in the Tremont Fire Department and exchanged emails with Chief Higgins to make sure they were in the loop.
Seems like it's a good fit for now.
Yeah.
Yeah. In the future, I would definitely like to see an ambulance come back over here, whether it's when we get the public safety building or, and that's one thing I hear a lot about, we don't have an ambulance over here. That would be good down the road to get one back over here.
Indeed, and, and just to be clear, when we had an ambulance here in the firehouse, it, we didn't have any way to have a provider here, so it was necessarily the, the number two ambulance and would only be used. And, you know, so, it didn't make the residents of Tremont any safer.
Sure.
They were still gonna get the first response out of downtown Southwest. It ju, it felt better.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. We get that, we get that. We would love to, to be able to do that. But some dreamy spot in the future, if it turned out that you guys built the public safety building, I know that Andrew Brayley and Jesse and others have had conversations about, well, what would be, what, what would it look like? Would there be space for an ambulance and a provider to be on duty? And if that came to pass, we would definitely wanna take advantage of it.
Have you guys had any luck with more staffing? Cause I know in the past, staffing is an issue, staffing is an issue everywhere.
It's always an issue for us. We had a very good September with staffing. August was a bit rough, but September was very good. October is starting off well, we've got a few gaps in our on-call, on, on our calendar. One of the things is because we're now kind of the exception to the other organizations' ambulance services on the island and nearby in that we're still a per diem provider. So, the people who work for us have full-time jobs other places, and so they're coming and taking shifts with us. And we've twice in the past year raised our pay scale to try to keep up so that Joe or Sue, paramedic, would take shifts with us rather than doing overtime at Mount Desert. So, we're, we're working hard to try to keep up with that, but it is a challenge, you're absolutely right.
Good, good, good.
Yeah, and I agree with Mackenzie, I've heard people say that they'd love to see an ambulance back over here, but I do understand that your EMT's in Southwest, so.
You could have somebody to drive it.
Yeah, even if, say, Dave came from his house down to the Bass Harbor Fire Department, grabbed the ambulance, you still gotta wait for the EMT to come out of Southwest. So, it's, you know, it, I understand what, you know, why it, I think it is, it's just a comfort feeling for a lot of people that, to see it there and to know it's there and, and, you know, for whatever reasons. Hopefully, we can get a public safety building at some point and maybe have a spot to house someone there would be ideal. Key to everything.
Yeah, so, we plan to meet with the ambulance board on Wednesday before our meeting to discuss long-range future plans, but we've also been talking to Melissa Adams from the state of New York about our department finding a license under the primary service and as first responder agency. And John, I'm, I'm service helping us for that, so, this baby step, so we've gotta work out all the, so that would give them, we have currently have four or five EMTs on our department that can off-run with the ambulance. And so, that would, license is then open that up. So hopefully, I, I personally like to see the volunteer model continue as long as we can before coming this way.
Yep.
And the lastly, the only thing, it was having this, ambulances in two locations was also very logistically confusing about them having to come and do daily checks, find the battery dead or retrieve your medication. So, it actually added like an hour, hour and a half to the routine of the EMTs each day, which when the new director came on, that was something they were looking forward to eliminating. So, that's one of the reasons that pushed the ambulance to leave the town so they were closer together. So, yeah, so long-range planning together, we should, we should be able to outbuild them up and so.
Yeah, sounds good. Sounds real good. Anything else? Okay, thank you for updating us.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, next we have administrative official appointment. Mr. Jesse?
Yes, so I have appointed Katie Higgins is Deputy Code Enforcement Officer and 911 Addressing Officer. Katie is here. So, as you may or may not know, she's worked at the Bernard Post Office for the last 10, 11 years, so everybody around the town knows, should know her, so I think it'll be a good fit, well-known face for everybody come home to deal with the code department. And the arrangement is still in place with Southwest as it was agreed to originally. Our contract then allows us to replace the individual at our discretion, so they were, their manager was involved in the interviews and is on board with the decision. So, she will start tomorrow, but I'll, I'll take over at Southwest to introduce her. She'll be at work.
Yay, Katie!
All done with the post office?
I am, as of Friday.
Yeah.
Good enough.
Yes, it's a good time, but some things were changing that were looking like I was gonna be pushed out of the job, so it's not something that would make me just as happy.
Good.
Good.
Happy to have you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, man.
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Katie Higgins as Deputy Code Enforcement Officer and 911 Addressing Officer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the appointment of Katie Higgins as Deputy Code Enforcement Officer and 911 Addressing Officer. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Just like that, alright.
Yay!
Get to work!
I got nervous for no reason.
You'll be fine.
I'm pretty sure my face started red, so.
All right, next we have the Community Resilience Partnership Grant, MOU.
So, this is from the third round of the grant you guys authorized back the spring for Fly Ford jointly with the town of Mount Desert. It's to have a individual contracted to provide three days of service each week to the two towns on resiliency efforts. There's six holes in the application that apply to both towns, and then one individual to Tremont, one individual to Mount Desert. Mount Desert was the submitting grant, submitting town on the grant, so they receive the funds from the state and the bills from Climate Thrive and pay the bills. So, their manager's drafted up a memorandum for us to sign, authorize them to act on behalf in the process. Okay. And the amount of the grant was just over $119,000. It's for three, three years?
Twenty-two months.
Twenty-two months, yeah.
Position.
For three days a week?
Yep. So, the way here, three days a week?
They'll be in here a day and a half, so.
Oh, 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 three days between the two towns, question, question, okay. We have a place for this person?
They may not be here, principally all of the time.
Okay, okay. Good. I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the memorandum of understanding between the town of Tremont and the town of Mount Desert for the Community Resilience Partnership Grant work.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town manager to sign the memorandum of understanding between the town of Tremont and the town of Mount Desert for the Community Resilience Partnership Grant work. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have investment of surplus funds. Time to renew our CD if we want to renew our CD.
Last December, you chose to invest $250,000 of the town's surplus funds in a CD with Bar Harbor Financial Services. CD is, has now matured, has produced the $12,292 that was anticipated. That will go into our operating account for the FY24 budget and then the remainder, the $250,000 principal balance currently will sit in the financial services account, waiting to see if we would like to reinvest it or if we want it back in our surplus fund account. Bar Harbor Bank has proposed two options if you would like to reinvest the $250. Both are in your packet. One is a 12-month at five and a half compound rate producing $14,135, and the second is an 18-month at 5.3 producing $20,606. Both the 12 or the 18 would fall within your FY24 budget for use of that.
Can you imagine? A CD is over 5.5%. Two years ago, it was like, a mortgage was like three. How much is in the surplus right now, roughly?
Just over $100,000.
Okay. I mean, I can't imagine why we wouldn't wanna do it again. We just made.
Yeah.
Twelve and a half, $13,000, right?
Yeah.
Instead of it sitting in the, in the surplus fund.
Is 18 months too long?
I don't think if they'll commit to it for five and a half percent.
I'd say do it, well, it's 5.3 for 18 months, but still, otherwise, we're just gonna be right back here talking about it again in 12 months.
Yeah, and it's hard telling, I mean, I don't see the interest rate going down anytime soon, but if they did, then still we're locked in for, you know, that year and a half.
I guess the only thing is if it go, if it's better in a year, you know, but it's only another six months anyway, so.
Yeah. I don't think it's gonna get increased. I, well, maybe, well, I hope, I don't see, I don't see how it can increase anymore. A business loan right now is like 9%, so. No, I mean, I, I would do the 18 months at the $250. I just didn't know if we should put more in it first. I mean, if you're not doing anything with it.
Um, I'd rather, I'm trying to get a proposal together on more investments on our reserve accounts, so right now, I'd recommend sticking $250 and see what happens with the rest of it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, that's fine, it just, it's a pretty decent income for the town.
Easy.
Yeah.
So, how much?
18 months.
Yeah, go to 18 months.
I think so, too. Motion, I motion to direct the town treasurer to invest $250,000 of the town surplus fund balance in an 18-month CD with Bar Harbor Financial Services at a rate of at least 5.3%.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct the town manage, town treasurer to invest $250,000 of town surplus fund balance in an 18-month CD with Bar Harbor Financial Services as a, at a rate of at least 5.3%. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we've got town office closure. Like to close on the election day, November 7th?
Yep.
I thought you guys did. That's pretty exciting to ask.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, you have to be down here, though.
Yeah.
Hold on, yes.
You don't have to run back and forth.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's way easier.
Another one of the perks of Tremont.
So, we've done it the last two years, and as a reminder, the bookkeeper, code enforcement, and I will be upstairs working answering phone available non-work mode.
Just means they'll all call you the next day, Sarah. They'll be staring at you the next day in the window.
They'll just come downstairs.
Yeah.
They'll just come down here and say, hey, can I, I have this answer, do that answer?
They'll be calling Katie on their cell phone, too.
Um, I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to close the business lobby of the town office on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023 due to staffing the election.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town manager to close the business lobby of the town office on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023 due to the staffing the election. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Right, town managers report.
All right. Over the last couple of weeks, I've worked on renewing the workers' comp insurance policy, worked on the senior tax rebate we discussed at your last meeting, attended the conference of plan hearing, met with Climate Thrive regarding the Department of Energy Grant that you authorized at one of your last meetings. Did some work on the Brown Town Loth program from the grant we received from the Department of Agriculture. Meeting prep for this meeting, attended the League of Towns meeting, conducted Harper Master interviews, and met with a local bank regarding future investment opportunities. Clerk's been busy processing BNB reports, preparing oaths, attended a tax lien seminar, doing CEO work, filling in assisting John here in the Little Mid-Southwest, sent public hearing notices for your October 16th meeting, and started election preparations. Public Works was busy mowing, fixed the crosswalk sign at the school, painted the speed radar trailer, housekeeping around the garage and clean up the salt shed. First load of the salt was delivered today.
Oh, man.
Harper Master held the, held the town boat out prior to the last storm, with storm patrol, picked up the dock, removed the broken flying pole. We did get news that it is covered by our insurance policy, so that's good. Dealt with a complaint to boat, boat's tied up overnight, met with the town crew, cleaned up behind the dumpster, more dock cleanup, launched the Harper Master boat, cleaned the boat, and has been working on the security system. Over the next couple of weeks, I'm attending the MMA convention this week in Augusta and giving more Harper Master interviews.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Suggestions for the next meeting? Date of the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, October 16th at 5:00 PM at the town office.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, October 16th, 2023, 5:00 PM at the town office. Is there any discussion?
That's the night of the short-term rental public hearing.
Yeah, okay. So we're trying to make the other agenda a little lighter.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
We're not here all night. All those in favor? All right, last thing, we've got an executive session, consultation with legal counsel.
I don't see any.
Where is it?
He's kinda on.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for consultation between the board and its attorneys concerning pending or contemplated litigation as permitted by one MRSA four oh five six E.
Second. Been moved and seconded to go into executive session, fatal consultation with legal counsel, as read by Mackenzie. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, so that's an easy one.
Okay, we are out of executive session at five fifty-one.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town attorney, James Collier, to engage attorney Zachary Brandwine, sorry, of Bernstein Shore as co-counsel to represent the town in the litigation between Madeline Brogdon versus the town of Tremont.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town attorney, James Collier, to engage attorney Zachary Brandwine of Bernstein Insurance Co. Counsel to represent the town in the litigation between Madeline Brogdon versus the town of Tremont. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion to adjourn? Second. All those in favor?